I agree with what all of my board members have said. We thank you kindly, look forward to working with you in the future as well. Have a good one. Okay, the next thing on our schedule is the consent agenda.
May I make a motion be approved as presented?
Second.
Motion and popular second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, community partner updates. Yes, sir.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir. Honorable Donald C. Blessings.
Don't say I was honorable.
Honorable.
Well, you know, you've known me so long.
You're exactly right.
Say it, Bo.
She's got the gall, Bo, now.
You know this is my secondary courtroom, though, don't you?
Yes.
So let's talk about that since you brought that up. That leads me to want to say something not related to my comments, but I want to thank you, folks, for what you've done. I became a judge on December 1, 2014. And I've never come to you directly, but on one occasion, that was for another constitutional officer during a special meeting when I knew I didn't have the right to speak, but I believe you chaired that meeting. You made the mistake of asking me, "Why are you here?" And I told y'all, and y'all helped that person out, too. I like the fact that you've been helpful and responsive. We've had renovations to the courthouse. I spent a little money, you kept us in business during COVID. You don't know other courts around. The Commonwealth were not doing what we were doing. We were using TVs in addition to social distancing as well as Buck and Cumberland. So I want to thank you. Y'all always available, responsive to me. And I feel, and my comments are going to relate to the recovery court. I do feel like I'm among friends. I got here early, I spoke to a lot of folks out here, spoke to a lot of folks up here. If I don't get to speak to you, I apologize, but I know y'all are busy and got a lot to do. And the reason I want to mention about being among friends because to me, that is the concept of the recovery court. And you might be going, "What is the recovery court?" I'm trying real hard to use that term. Back in June, officially, the name of drug courts was changed to recovery court, make it a little bit more responsive and speak to the mission of the courts. And I will tell you something about that. We have a recovery court serving Prince Edward, Buckingham and Cumberland. We were approved on June 28, 2014 after someone was told that we didn't get approved and would not be considered again until October 2024. Well, the someone who was told is kind of obstinate and hard-headed and initials are Don Blessing. And so we got approved in June. Another thank you I want to give you, and you're going to hear from her in a minute, she's the star of the presentation tonight, is Beth Rivas. You have enabled us to have her as a consultant for this recovery court. And I want to say that she is very good, very knowledgeable. She has a background in social services, she's done this before. She knows Mr. Stanley. I'm sure Mr. Stanley could tell you some good things about her, too. But she walked into a situation where we were working on this recovery court. Now, let's define this "we," because that implies me. When I got on the bench in 2014, I was a defense attorney for 34 years before I also attorney for the town of Farmville and mixed practice. And I saw and represented a lot of folks with drug problems. We've got a drug problem. And everybody's got a drug problem south side of Virginia, but we're getting some really serious stuff like meth and fentanyl. And fentanyl kill you, okay? And it's a waste of people, lives. You know, I often say in court, you know, we've got to try to get you right because somebody out there loves you. You got a mama at least, you know, everybody's mama loves them. But the problem is you start thinking that they should think the way you do. They don't, their brains are rewired. Anyway, let's get back to this "we." I was unsuccessful. I didn't have anybody who could champion this cause with me, to help me out. We've got three outstanding Commonwealth attorneys in this area where in Prince Edward. So let's deal with Ms. Clark first, she's outstanding. All she's ever done is prosecute. It's amazing to me that she has a defense perspective and attitude. But I guess it all comes down to she was raised in this community, she knows everybody, she's a human nature kind of prosecutor. Then we've got Wendy Hannah, who was her second-in-command here. They are thick as thieves. I think one could finish the other's sentences, which is not a bad thing. But she is very good, smart, responsive. And then we have Kemper Beasley over in Buckingham. And Kemper is very intelligent. Some of you may not know, he went to Duke Divinity School. He'd been a preacher, too, so he's got a little bit different perspective. And the three of them kind of got together and said, "Judge, what we're doing ain't working. We need something else, we need a recovery court." We think in terms of punishment. I'm not saying that's wrong, but punishment doesn't work for everybody. There are people who were not raised like many of us in this room with good support, good morals. So they don't think as we do. This is not to excuse them, but if you want to change conduct, you've got to get inside the head of somebody who has this problem that you wish to fix. Anyway, these three outstanding Commonwealth attorneys came to me and said, "Judge, what do you think about us forming a drug court?" I used drug court term because that's what it was then. And I said, "It's a wonderful idea, I didn't get anywhere with it." He said, "You don't have to do a thing." Sounds good to me. So they got together, they pretty much designated Mr. Beasley, who had an intern who worked on it, and they put together a pretty good draft of a product. But if you've never done it before, there are a few glitches and technical things. We got Beth in. Beth kind of tweaked what was a pretty good product, but it needed tweaking and put us in a position to get turned down and then accepted on June 28, which was very, very helpful. Now, these three Commonwealth attorneys are enthusiastic, and their enthusiasm is infectious. They've got me excited about this. Why? We have certain things we can do in circuit court. We have certain resources, but we don't have the resources that we would have with a recovery court. And it really requires the communities to come together, to form a team. And we had, after we got this approval, we had a meeting of the prospective people who would be on a team. The team is pretty well defined with probation and parole. We don't know who the members are, we know who the organizations are. We're getting to the point where we're saying, "Tell us who you want." But who, I kind of get to decide that, but good group. Healthcare providers. So we had a meeting just to kind of say, "Look, we're going to need you." This is the first meeting some time ago. Everybody that we invited, and we had a video hookup, because you know, people are so busy, it's hard to get them all together. At one time, we had a video hookup. Mr. Stamey, county administrator in Cumberland, was unable to attend. Great excuse, taking his daughter to college for the first time. I'd be there with him, but he called before, he called after. He said, "What happened?" Was Stanley was here, was Carter from Buckingham? Everybody attended in person except three people. Our defense attorney, he attended by video in Buckingham because he had court immediately afterwards in Buckingham. I had two members of clerks' offices, Buckingham ones, not the clerks, but their deputies in Cumberland. And it was not necessary for them to attend, but they won't see what it was about. I like that, okay? I like that. So we've got people pretty much in a position where we are starting to galvanize, get to where they're expecting them. So let me, Ms. Rivas is going to really give you a better presentation than I am, but I've got a couple more things to say. Halifax County, which is in the 10th Judicial Circuit, has had for a substantial period of time a drug court and a recovery court. I don't know if any of y'all know Joel Cunningham, he's a retired judge, but he is awesome. In fact, when we had this little glitch where we weren't approved right away, I emailed him at two different email addresses. I called, left voicemails on two, never heard from him. We go to judicial conference. All of us had decided to sit together at this roundtable. Last one in is Joel. He comes in, brings all of his stuff, sets a pen. He said, "Blessing," Zach quote, "I'm not blowing you off. I'm going to help you, but I had to do some things first." He said, "What are you going to do this afternoon?" My response was, "Probably pretty much whatever you tell me." He said, "I want you to come to the drug court meeting." I said, "I've been with you the last four years, no reason to stop now." To put it in that nice old term we used in the '70s, Joel got mojo. Before that meeting was over, that woman who turned us down not only came over and hugged me, gave me a kiss on the cheek, said, "I think we can help you out." Okay? So they went to Halifax today, they being Ms. Rivas and my administrative assistant, Allison Jamerson. She's going to be integral to me in my office. And they went to observe the team meeting. Typically, this is a team meeting held an hour before court. And then there's court. The court is not exactly court like we think of it. It's a little bit more informal because it's built on personal relationships. You've got a lot of trust you've got to build before you can get anywhere to these people. Then afterwards, they had the opportunity to meet with a lot of the team members and with Judge Cunningham. And I think it was, I don't know if they went down there and re-cared on Halifax County or if they learned a lot and were enthused. I'm going to go with enthused. They came back almost giddy. I said, "Come on in and tell me what's going on." Exciting news for me personally today. You just don't put somebody in recovery court. There's a request for referral. Referrals can come from all kinds of places. You know, you first think it's going to come within the court system, but for example, the sheriff could give us a referral. Well, we got a referral from Mr. Beasley, and that does not mean the person's in court. They have to go through an assessment. It's a two-level assessment. First, probation and parole puts them through this thing called Compass, which is, I understand what it does, I couldn't tell you ad test, but it's drug-related. Then the next is we've got to get a professional treatment provider like Crossroads to do an assessment. And then if they are found to be appropriate candidates, doesn't mean they're in. The Commonwealth attorneys have absolute veto power, saying, "Well, you know, I don't want this person in." They may know something about this person that I'm not supposed to know. There may be something going on in a community which they're aware of, but I've got some pretty mature people who are doing this. I know they're of young age, but they're pretty mature. But I'm excited. So we may have a candidate immediately. There's two other possibilities, one here and one in Cumberland. That's all I call them right now, possibilities. No requests have been made, but it's been discussed just a little bit. We are already setting the calendar aside for court dates, for drug court, recovery court in January, starting in January. We still got to put the team together, we got to get them cohesive. There's some things that have got to be done, we're moving forward. So the last comment I want to make is unrelated to the drug court. That empty chair over there, I want you to get a hold of that man in that empty chair. Because if you talk to that man who sits in that empty chair over there, he got an idea that needs some follow-through at some point. He asked me to say this, we need a program within the jail. Different people need different levels of help. And Reiko has a wonderful program for people who are in the jail. And rather than let them sit on their p'toots, let's get them in a place that if they are receptive to learning and receiving information, we can. I know he's interested in it. I don't know where his level of interest is, if he's had the ability to work on it, but you know, he's got a DOC background. So I would not be surprised at anything that he said or did. But we need help on all levels. So I'll stop talking, I'll let somebody who's got something worthwhile to say, speak right now. I do thank you for your time. I'm going to let Beth talk to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Judge Blessing. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Okay. I'm guessing I advance it with this? Okay. Oh, how so? Okay, cool, I got that. Okay. So I want to tell you, give you a little bit of background about recovery courts and what they intend to do and how they're formed and what they're, how they work. They are specialized court dockets, and they have to be approved by the Supreme Court of Virginia. They have a committee that you put your application to. They send you back recommendations on things that they want you to change or make more in line with best practice. You make those changes, resubmit, and then eventually you get approved. And so we did that process, like the judge said, and we got approved on June 28. But there's a lot of logistical details that have to be in place before you can start your court. And that's what I came to do, is get all those pieces in place so that when we start the court, we have the resources and the services in place that we need. The one good thing about that that affects the whole community is once you get those services and things in place, the whole community can avail themselves of those services. So a lot of times, it brings services that you didn't have before. And because there's a guaranteed caseload, it's easier for them to bill for those, the vendors to bill for those services, and then you increase the services available to your whole population. Because the drug court is going to serve a subset of people in this community. But there's more families that are dealing with this problem, more people that are dealing with this problem, and we want them to have services, too. So it's an additional benefit that you establish a court and establish these services, and then the whole community can benefit from those services as well. The aim of the drug court is to reduce recidivism. I mean, people are stuck in this revolving door of committing crimes, going to jail or prison, being on probation, getting out, starting that process all over again. Sometimes it's intergenerational. So you see mothers, fathers and their children, maybe grandparents, all stuck in this revolving door of crime, punishment, and no positive outcomes. Today in the court, a young lady said that she had been in and out of prison since 2018. And today, she graduated from the drug court with 370-some days sober. She had a job, she got her children back, and she was a completely changed person. And she had spent all of those years in and out of jail, on and off, never off probation. She had never been off probation since she was 15 years old. And so she changed her life, and it was a really, I mean, I have to admit, I cried through half a presentation because it was really wonderful to see somebody turn their life around. And if you know anything about addiction, it's a disease, and it changes the way your brain works. And it's not something that's easy to overcome. And so to see somebody do so well was just really encouraging and emotional for me. Drugs courts have been around since 1989. They started in Miami. And now there are 4,000 courts in all over the United States, and they have them internationally. They are recognized as one of the most successful interventions with people with addiction that exists. The data says that a drug court participant has a 16% recidivism rate after three years. A person who starts in the drug court but doesn't necessarily graduate, but learns something while they're in there, has a 26% recidivism rate. Someone who just goes to prison and comes out has a 48% recidivism rate, which means you can reduce that number by 2/3, by giving people the services they need to change their lives. The nice thing about the court is that it's a carrot and a stick approach, and it's long enough. So let me explain what that means. You have sanctions and incentives, you have supervision, and you have intense supervision, and you have constant drug testing. So people are drug tested two to three times a week, so we always know where they are in their recovery process. The judge can hand out in court sanctions and incentives. An incentive might be him saying how proud he is of them and how well they've done that week or in the last two weeks, that they have had no positive drug screens. They might have gotten a job, they might have been able to start visiting their children. He recognizes all the positive aspects, and he also holds them accountable to the things they didn't do so well. Maybe they blew off one of their therapy appointments or they didn't show up for a probation appointment. So he has the ability to incentivize good behavior and sanction behavior that's not in keeping with the rules of the drug court. So, and it's long enough. It's between 18 and 24 months. Not everybody takes that long. There's five phases. You have to reach milestones to go from one phase to the other. The first phase is very intensive with treatment because you're really fighting that craving that you have for drugs when you first enter the court. You might have some positive drug screens, but you're in therapy, you're in intensive treatment. You might be in four or five treatment modalities a week. So you're spending all your time trying to start your recovery process and learning the skills. Then you move to another phase, and you're learning more coping skills, different coping skills. So instead of turning to a drug when you're upset or have a crisis, or you want to feel good or you don't want to feel anything at all, they give you the skills to look at life and treat your body differently. And it gives you time for your brain to start to recover. So, you know, we can send people to residential treatment for six or nine weeks, eight weeks, but that's not long enough for people to change their lives. You have to have much longer periods of time, especially for a drug like meth, which is the drug of choice most people in this area. It's cheap and it's available. And so, and it's a very, very difficult drug to get off of. It changes your brain, rewires your brain, and it makes the drug-seeking behavior all you can think about. And so the judge has a different role in the drug court. It's a multidisciplinary approach. I haven't changed any of these slides, sorry about that. Okay. So the judge is the head of a multidisciplinary team. So you have a judge, you have the Commonwealth attorneys, and they're to kind of protect the interests of the community. So you're dealing with people who've committed crimes, and we want to make sure that their behavior is consistent with leaving them in the community to receive these services and treatments or putting them in prison or jail where they might have been sentenced for the crime they committed. So they're kind of there to look out for the public's interest in the process. The defense attorney is there to make sure that the clients and participants' rights are protected and their civil liberties are protected. Probation is there for supervision. They provide intensive supervision and services to the clients. Law enforcement makes home visits and visits people at their jobs and kind of keeps an eye on them in the community and lets the judge know, you know, we arrested, you know, busted the house last week and your client was there and is around people they shouldn't be around. So they're eyes and ears in the community, and that helps the drug court know what's going on. Then you have your treatment providers, and they provide intensive, evidence-based therapies for people with addictions. So you've got a wraparound services and program for these folks, and you can hold them accountable. You know, when I talk to the doctors at the CSB with the substance abuse treatment part of it, they say, you know, people have a crisis, they start drug treatment, but then something happens and they drop out, and they don't hear from them again. So when you're in drug court, you don't have that option because if you do that, you're going to go to prison or to jail. So, and it actually, it sounds punitive, and there's some criticism on the internet saying that the drug court's coercive. But you volunteer for the program. Nobody can force you. The judge can't order you into drug court. He can allow you into drug court, but he can't order you into drug court. So it's something you choose. You may wish you hadn't. Some people choose prison over drug court because it's so invasive. You know, we test you, we know where you are, we know where you work, we know where you are 24 hours a day. You have a curfew that you have to adhere to. We require community service to try to reintegrate you into the community so that you become, have some self-esteem, feel good about yourself, provide the community some support. So there's all the, we keep you really busy because before, you spent all your time seeking drugs, and now we need to put something else into your life, work or community service, to fill in those empty hours that you used to do things you weren't supposed to do. Let me see where I am. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Okay. Technology is not my friend. So recovery courts is an umbrella term because it encompasses the drunk-driving courts, the family drug courts, which are mostly parents of children in foster care. There's some dockets specifically for that. They have veterans courts in the area where I live in Tidewater, mostly for people that are in the service, the Navy especially. And we have mental health courts because people with serious mental health issues, especially the homeless, have a lot of issues with the courts, and they need special attention separate from the other dockets. So that's always, that's been a real help for people with mental health issues. So we've talked about recidivism, we've talked about cost-effectiveness a little bit, but it's less of a burden on the criminal justice system, and it costs less to process somebody through the drug court than it does the regular process. Improved public health is a big one, and most people, you don't read about that very much, but drug abuse comes with it a huge public health cost for hepatitis A, B and C. That population is very likely to have one of those and spread those. They're also likely to have possibly infect a large part of your community or drug-using community with AIDS. So one person in one community that I read about infected 19 more people with AIDS because they shared needles. So, you know, there are other health costs to the community other than just the substance abuse disorder. We want people to have better lives. We want their mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers to have better lives. And if you have a person with a substance abuse disorder in your family, it is entirely disruptive. Every family gathering is an issue. Every, you know, phone call in the middle of the night is something that makes your heart stop. They steal from you, they behave badly, they can exhibit violent tendencies, paranoia, all very hard to deal with. And, you know, it's people you love, and you hate to see people that you love in that situation. It's heartbreaking. So, like I said, it's a lower cost than putting somebody through the traditional court system. It's also cheaper than incarceration, which is very expensive. To feed and watch somebody 24/7, a group of people, is expensive. So what are our challenges for our court? We need to look for sustainable funding sources. We need to be concerned about sober housing. We have transportation issues, and I need to find drug testing sites. Because if you're drug testing somebody three times a week and on the weekends, we have, probation and parole are going to help us with drug testing during the week, but their offices are here. So I'm looking for sites that we can contract with that are in the other location. that are in the other locality so they don't always have to come into Prince Edward to get their drug tests. So I'm looking for those sources. And last night I met with a group of Methodist gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen at the Methodist Church, the United Methodist Church, and they offered to help with some transportation issues. So that was helpful. Sober housing, any kind of housing is always an issue, but sober housing is an issue. You don't want people in the drug court living with somebody who's actively using. So we will need to, you know, struggle with that a little bit, but it's something that can be managed. One of the things that's good is you can say to a landlord, you know, you can rent to our folks because there's going to be law enforcement stopping by to see what kind of condition the place is in. And if they're trashing it, they're going to tell the judge, and the judge is going to say, that's not the way we're going to do this. You know, we helped you get this place. Maybe we paid your first month in deposit, and we expect you to treat that piece of property with respect, respect for yourself, respect for the landlord, and don't make it hard for people that come behind you to be able to rent property and live someplace safe and drug-free. Where are we right now in the process? We've identified, or we are in the process of identifying the actual members that'll be part of the drug court team. So we have the judge. We've identified a Commonwealth attorney and a backup for the actual dockets. We're having meetings with probation and parole to see who they're going to assign to the team. I've worked with Sheriff Epps with our law enforcement part. We're going to, as soon as we get the actual team together, we're going to start having team meetings so that that group starts to gel and understand their roles. There's a lot of training that I'm going to need to do. I also am applying for national training where they come to the locality and train the participants in their roles and best practice. We're developing the budget. I'm looking at flow charts with time so that we can do, get people into the court as fast as possible and get them in services as fast as possible. We have to have, you know, regular forms. I want to do some grant templates so that when I'm gone, the drug court coordinator has what she needs or he needs to apply for grants because there's a lot of money out there in grants. And they all ask pretty much for the same information. So if you give somebody a template and they're not used to grant writing, it makes it a lot easier for them. We need promotional materials so that we can get that out to the attorneys and people in the jail so they know about the program, they know who to refer, who's going to be eligible, who's not. The one thing people need to know is it's for nonviolent offenders. So we're not keeping people out of prison who have committed a crime where they hurt somebody. And so they're really not a danger to the community. We have to develop an MOU between the three counties so that we can share the cost of the court appropriately. I'm putting in an application for the foundational training that is done by a national group that has 20 years of experience doing data and developing best practices for drug courts. And then we will advertise for a coordinator. The coordinator position is kind of the glue that keeps the whole team together. They keep all the data. They write the reports. They manage the grants. They manage the finance part. They meet with participants when they need to. They might be in the community looking for additional resources. They might also be meeting with the participants when they need extra. Sometimes the judge might say, you've got to meet with somebody on this team every day next week because you don't have your act together yet. We need to help you. So we need to see you, and we need to talk to you more. And so, you know, he or she might have to participate in that process. In fact, today at the court in Halifax, last week they drug tested everybody five times because people were slipping up and having issues. So, you know, you have a lot of discretion. You can give people what they need when they need it, which is helpful. It's not a one-size-fits-all. People are treated as individuals and with a lot of respect. And it's probably, in a lot of cases, the first time somebody with the stature of a judge speaks to them with respect and not the distance that you have in a regular courtroom. And the judge really, you know, wants to know, how'd you do last week? What went well for you? What didn't go well for you? How did you handle that problem? You know, and if maybe somebody messes up, they'll assign them an essay. And nobody wants to write an essay. We didn't want to do it when we were in school, and we certainly don't want to do it now. But it makes people be more introspective. Think about why you used. Think about what your trigger was. Think about what you could have done differently. And so, you know, the judge has the discretion to use all sorts of things as a motivator. Let's see, what else have we got? That's it. Does anybody have any specific questions that I might be able to answer?
There is a statistic. For every dollar that you spend in drug court, I think you save, what is it, $33?
I think that's right.
Let's see. By the way, Ms. Pride, I'd be glad to write an essay for you.
Yes, sir.
If a family had a teenager that was on drugs, they could come and ask you all for assistance?
It's for adults. But like I said, once the services are put in place for the drug court through the Community Services Board, they'll be available to everybody.
We do have to have a criminal charge of some sort.
Yeah.
Because that is, we're always going to talk in terms of positive things, but they have to know that there is an ultimate consequence beside these other consequences. I do want to add one thing to what you said. The state is willing to come to us and give us some training as well. Probably the national training will be superior, but the state has done this, and we can get some immediate training as long as somebody's not booked ahead of us. That's another reason we'll kind of get this team in place.
So like I said, if the CSB develops a group for people with trauma that are using drugs to deal with that trauma or they have a co-occurring disorder, and they develop a group for people to come to, then it's not going to be only for the drug court people necessarily. It could be anybody who needs that service. So it does benefit. But usually you don't mix adult and youth populations in any kind of therapeutic intervention. But the CSB can charge for these services. Medicaid pays for these services. And when the people come out of jail, they don't have jobs. They're all eligible for Medicaid. So Medicaid is going to start paying for these services, which allows them to maybe hire additional service providers, hire another therapist, hire another substance abuse physician. So it all works in the positive to get more services into this community for everybody.
Mr. Gillum, kind of like I am. If you don't know what's going on, you ask a question, I ask a question. That doesn't mean there won't be resources available, and there may be increasing resources available to someone with a problem who is not in the judicial system. And that could be another benefit. One of the benefits could be just for the public as a whole because it will step up our game on certain things. It doesn't necessarily mean drug problems. I would hope that we could have the benefit of better mental health treatment eventually, better just physical treatment for folks. We always need that in the community.
Anybody else?
Thank you kindly. We appreciate that.
Well, I'll be here, I'm here every other, every month for a week, and I'm available for one-on-one questions that come up. Anytime the board has, I can make another presentation. Anytime the board has questions, I'm happy to speak to you one-on-one. I can meet with you and let you know how it's going and what we're doing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
At this time, we will have Mr. Kirby Wolfalk, the Forest Manager from Virginia Department of Forestry.
All right. Well, I thank you, board. This presentation is going to be a bit of a gear change after the importance of that. It's going to seem kind of inconsequential. But for those of you I haven't met, my name is Kirby Wolfalk, and I'm the manager at the Prince Edward Galleon State Forest that's out here. And every year, I try to come here and give you kind of a little bit of update on what we've achieved out on the forest. This year, it was all about trying to get the roads fixed. Unfortunately, that didn't happen very much. We had a lot of equipment issues, and our state forest system usually gets all the hand-me-downs from the regular county folks who get all the new equipment. Evidently, fixing our roads isn't as important as putting out the fire in the woods behind your house. I agree with that, but it's still frustrating. That didn't stop us from getting some other good work going out there, though. We hosted several tours of the forest, and we hosted several actual educational seminars to help educate our new folks and educate some other folks around the community and around the public. Additionally, we were able to put in, write much research out there, which includes stuff like oak generation research and even some drone spraying. We're now doing aerial spray applications using drones. This is all stuff that kind of pioneers new practices that your forest landowners will hopefully be using in the future to better manage their forest and bring their cost down. Overall, though, we covered that cost. The state forest actually ends up using timber management sales in order to recover the cost of doing some of that forest management activity. Part of those management sales go back to the county in which that forest is held. And for this year, that check coming to the county is for $30,120, which I'll give over to her in just one second. I'm here for any questions, if you have any at all.
Thank you kindly. Mr. Stanley, would you discuss what the public hearing is about, please?
Yes, ma'am. Our first public hearing is on the Virginia Public School Authority financing for the Prince Edward County Elementary School. As the board is aware, the Prince Edward County Elementary School construction project is estimated between $43 million and $44 million. With the assistance of Davenport and Company, the county will be structuring a multifaceted financing plan. The school's received a grant in the amount of $8,665,710 through the Virginia Capital School Projects Fund, which leaves approximately $35 million to finance. At its meeting on May 14th, the board passed a resolution authorizing the staff to submit an application to the Virginia Literary Loan Fund. The resolution enabled the county to borrow up to $25 million at a below-market 3% interest rate for 20 years. The application has been approved. The remaining balance of the school construction funding will come to the Virginia Public School Authority this fall. The financing will be market rate based on the strong credit of VPSA, which would be a AA1, AA+ or AA+ with a term up to 25 to 30 years. The borrowing rate through VPSA is expected to be below the planning level of 4.5%. And at September 10 meeting, the board will hold a public hearing, and at the end of the public hearing, we'll ask you to approve a resolution in the form required by VPSA to issue up to $16,800,000 in principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2024, to complete financing for the project and authorize the county administrator and other county representatives to take all actions necessary to complete the submission of the application and participate in the VPSA pool borrowing. County is accepting construction bids. I think now it's been scheduled for October 1st. The final bids will allow the county to adjust the borrowing amount from VPSA should bids come in lower than the planning levels. Sands Anderson will be serving as bond counsel, and Jesse Balsh is here this evening. He's an attorney with Sands Anderson. In your packet, you've got a copy of the public hearing notice that was published in the Herald, graph resolution, assessment bond, and Davenport's previous financial analysis. Again, that will be updated once we get to the board. Jesse, anything that I've left out? So with that, I think we're ready to open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to speak?
Sir, check the sheet. I'm going to double-check the sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
No one signed up?
Is there anyone online who would care to speak? Seeing and hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Okay. At this time, Mr. Love?
Actually, Madam Chair, we need a vote.
Oh.
There's a sample motion in your packet for consideration by the board.
I move that the board supervisors approve the attached resolution approving the sales of bonds to the Virginia Public School Authority for renovation of Prince Edward County Elementary School.
I'll second it.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. And at this time, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
I don't think I'm allowed to vote, right?
Okay. Mr. Jenkins, yes. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, our next public hearing is to consider an application that was filed by Prospect Gospel Tabernacle Church for a special use permit to replace an existing pole sign with a 32-square-foot electronic sign having a total height of 19 feet on tax parcel 031A-40 at 4307 Prince Edward Highway. This parcel is Zoned A1, and the fact that it's an electronic sign requires it to have a special use permit. This public hearing was properly advertised in the formal Herald. You have a copy of that notice in your packet as well as the sample letter that went out to adjoining property owners. I had no one contact me since the original advertisement of the Planning Commission that opposed this application. The Planning Commission held their advisory hearing on August 20th, where no one spoke in opposition. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, forwarding request to you with some potential conditions. And again, it should be noted that where the sign is located, the grade of where the pole, the ground level, is a different elevation than the highway. So your net impact, it doesn't, you're not looking up at it. You're kind of looking straight at the sign. But we don't, the staff didn't feel that this was, had middle impacts on the property. They're using an existing pole. They're taking an existing sign box and replacing it with a new electronic box. So it's, but the electronic portion of it required it to come to you. I'd be glad to answer any questions any board member might have of me.
Any questions from the board members?
What are the special, it says list of conditions. I'm trying to...
It should be your attachment number six. Let me see. I have to look at what page that's on, sir. I've got to flip through my packet.
This is your...
It should be, if you look at page 143 and 144, there's nine conditions there, marked draft, that the Planning Commission looked at. Basically requires that they get a building permit, a zoning permit on a construction side. Light doesn't shine on adjoining property. Shouldn't illuminate. V-dot shouldn't be placed within V-dot right-of-way. Does limit it to the 32-square-foot. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? At this time, I will open the public hearing.
No one has signed up, Madam Chair.
No one has signed up. Is there anyone who cares to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit request by Prospect Gospel Tabernacle Church with the following listed conditions.
Sir?
Spin motion and properly second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Dr. Pride?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes. Mr. Love?
Our next public hearing is consideration of an application filed by North Branch Solar LLC for a special use permit to construct a, and operate a 3-megawatt solar energy facility on a 40-acre portion of 147.5 acre tract of land denoted as 043-A-34, located on the east side of Thomas Jefferson Highway, which is state route, 47 across from Point Road. This is an A1 zoning district, and this use requires a special use permit. Public hearing was advertised properly in the formal herald. Copy of that advertisement, as well as the adjoining property owner letters are in your packet, as well as this one was so close to counties of Appomattox and Charlotte, also had to send landowners in that, those localities and the county administrator a letter. I had no correspondence from the adjoining counties, they didn't have any issue or express any concern at all about this. In fact, I heard, had no response to that. Again, the purpose of this is to allow the location of a solar energy facility. The Planning Commission held their advisory public hearing. No one spoke in opposition. They recommended it be forwarded to you with recommendation of approval with potential conditions, attachment six. County staff is of the opinion it's generally compatible to zoning district. Just for historical note, this was part of an original site that was approved prior to the county having revenue share, prior to the county having an alternate energy or solar energy ordinance. So this site, once upon a time by different vendors, was an approved solar site along with the adjoining property that was owned by Ms. Frances Reeves behind it. The applicant is here, has a presentation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you all might have for me.
Are there any questions?
One quick question. Do you know why the lawsuit didn't follow through with the solar?
That died before my time here. It was approved, I think, by y'all in 2019. I think that was Turning Port Energy. They walked away from both parcels because Ms. Reeves had signed the adjoining parcel. That's a separate project. This is not part of her project. So now, instead of having one project without revenue share and without the rules and conditions of our current ordinance, these sites actually have more oversight. If the Reeves site has more oversight, I should say. And again, your template condition, which has the updated language that you all wanted as far as soil testing and the review of the decommissioning, is in the stock, is in the special use conditions that the Planning Commission looked at.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Love. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to speak?
Go ahead.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I will try and remember that up is down. Good evening. My name is John Townsend, and on behalf of Sun Tribe Development, I want to thank the board members, Prince Edward County Planning Department, Mr. Love, and all of you for being here this evening. I'm a native Virginian. Developing well-sighted, community-conscious projects is very important to me. You'll see that this project is just that. This is actually Sun Tribe's second small project in Prince Edward County, the first being the small project in Elam that is currently under construction. The Elam project was also accepted into a special Virginia shared solar program, and when that project is operational, it will provide direct electricity cost savings to low-income subscribers. Sun Tribe has had and continues to have a very positive experience working with Prince Edward County and staff, and I'm sincerely excited to be working with you again. All right. I'd like to begin by sharing a little bit about what the project is and what the project is not. North Branch Solar is the right-size project. It's in the right place, and it's consistent with the Prince Edward County Comprehensive Plan. This is a small solar facility occupying less than 38 acres of a 147-acre parcel. It is an opportunity for the landowner and the county to preserve this land for decades by way of a low-impact, non-permanent use that will be removed at the end of the project life. This allows the property to stay in the family for generations and prevents the land from being sold for more intensive, permanent residential or commercial uses. In fact, if approved, this property could continue to house cattle, silver culture, and a small solar lease. This project is not a health or safety concern to humans or the environment. It is not a burden on the county, residents, or taxpayers. In fact, it's the exact opposite. North Branch Solar will provide tangible benefits to the county by generating over $380,000 for Prince Edward County over the life of the project, and this is many times more than the county would generate with the property left in its current use. Once operational, North Branch Solar will be a quiet rural neighbor, generating electricity that will be consumed right here in the community without creating noise, emissions, dust, or odors. Throughout the remaining slides, I plan to demonstrate how Sun Tribe develops solar a little bit differently than other projects you may have seen or heard about in the Commonwealth, and we are here seeking the board's approval. A little bit of background and a little short plug for Sun Tribe. Sun Tribe is both founded and based in Virginia, and we care deeply about the Commonwealth. Sun Tribe is owned by a small family office whose principal resides in Charlottesville. As proud Virginians, Sun Tribe is also the founding member of a solar workforce development organization called Shine, which helps drive solar job creation in the state, and we are on the board of the Virginia Governor's Clean Energy Advisory Board, excuse me. I spoke with the landowner, Ms. McLennie, yesterday, and she reminded me that her and her late husband's reason for choosing Sun Tribe over many other companies was because we're a local company just up the road in Charlottesville. Sun Tribe is proud to play a part, a small part, in the legacy of this property, which has been in their family since the 1940s. North Branch Solar, as proposed, is a 3-megawatt solar project with no battery storage or expansion components. It is well-sighted in the A1 Agricultural Conservation District, and the project parcel is immediately adjacent to the Pamplin Substation, which you can see at the top of the image on your screen. The current use is a combination of cattle, which is owned and managed by the family, and timber acreage. You can see in this image how the project is restricted to one small corner in the southwest of the property, leaving ample cattle pasture and timberland undisturbed here. A project like this will be a good, quiet rural neighbor with a low visual profile and will not generate emissions, dust, odor, off-site noise, or excess traffic once operational. The project is designed to avoid wetlands, panels racking and equipment maintaining a minimum 100-foot setback from resource protection areas. Additionally, the project proposes 3,300 feet of new vegetative buffer along the western side to screen the project from the train tracks and on the south side to screen the project from the Elders and Jamersons' property. This project will connect to existing distribution lines, which you can see run directly through the proposed layout right there. This means there's no addition, additional substation needed. Oftentimes, I get asked, you know, what does this project do for me? And there are several tangible benefits that I'd like to highlight right here. Solar projects can be a great complement to the community and the local economy. This is a temporary use that will generate over $380,000 for Prince Edward County without any draw on county services. This is approximately 30 times more than the property's current use, and by bringing money in this way, Prince Edward can help keep taxes down. We often hear from neighbors that interim land use, such as solar, is preferred to houses, which have been referred to as the last crop. I've heard this sentiment echoed in multiple counties, and that extends to other more intensive uses of the property, such as commercial centers, business parks, or other uses that would increase lighting, traffic, noise, and this project does not do that. Solar energy is a local source of zero-emission energy production from a long-term reliable energy source, being the sun, and that will help stabilize electricity prices. Everybody here is reliant on electricity all day, all night, no matter how it is generated, and everyone will benefit if the electricity prices decrease. Outside of a short construction period, the project preserves this project area, excuse me, in a large field of native grasses and pollinators for the life of the project, which is proposed to be 30 to 40 years. The facility will not have active onsite management, but it will be remotely monitored for safety and security. So this being our second time, obviously, in Prince Edward, you know, North Branch was sited and is designed with the community in mind. This facility is well-hidden from nearby properties. Again, it's adjacent to train tracks there, and Prince Edward Highway is on the other side. That's not the name of the highway. Thomas Jefferson Highway, excuse me. Sighting of the project on a small portion provides significant setbacks to adjacent properties and the residents on the north side of the property. The closest residence is more than 500 feet away, and that is on the other side of the train tracks and Thomas Jefferson Highway. The panels are also set back more than 50 feet from the property boundary, but on average, much more than 150 or 200 feet. By utilizing only a portion of the family property, this allows the remaining 110, approximately or so, acres to remain in agricultural use. Again, this is a better picture that shows the supplemental vegetative buffering proposed, again, to protect the viewshed along the railroad tracks and the property to the south. Solar projects are inconspicuous with a low profile and a quiet, long-term existence. Additionally, the project does go through rigorous diligence for streams, wetlands, environmental features, and cultural and historic resources, and these reviews aren't just lip service. These are immediately put into practice for the design phase, especially for the stormwater, et cetera. You'll may be aware that solar facilities are held to an extremely high standard, particularly in Virginia, and the stormwater is managed for quantity and quality, and that's managed through the county and with guidance from DEQ at the state level. I want to show a couple examples here of what established ground cover looks like in an operational facility. These are not stock photos. Sun Tribe was involved in the development of each of these sites. One thing to keep in mind here is that these photos would be taken inside the fence line and inside any vegetation, so this is only visible if you're standing inside the actual facility, and this is not what it would look like, you know, from adjacent property or As noted by Mr. Love, small, responsibly-sited solar meets the criteria of many portions of the 2014 Prince Edward County Comprehensive Plan, and the Planning Commission agreed and voted unanimously that the project is in conformance with that plan. I've listed several specific sections here. Our narrative goes into even more detail as well, and also, I will note that the draft of the updated comp plan, which I know the county's working on for next year, has additional language supporting well-sited solar in chapters one on page 20 and chapter three, page 57. Solar is not a new technology, and I do get a lot of questions about safety, and there are some misconceptions out there. I want to begin with sort of the main components of a facility, which are steel for the racking, aluminum for the frames of the panels themselves, and then glass and silicon. The picture here on the screen, I think you'll have a bigger, bigger copy in front of you. You can see the aluminum frame that holds the glass over the plastic, which sandwiches the solar cells entirely in a plastic film. The solar cells themselves are made up of silicon, which has effectively the same makeup as sand. As discussed in the panel composition and a multitude of studies support this, there is no evidence that solar panels contaminate groundwater, period. Solar panels are safe. You know, for decades, we've been locating these on schools, hospitals, public buildings, boats, RVs, wristwatches, et cetera. Included in the application package were two independent studies, one by NC State University and one issued by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, that confirm the safety of the panels and their composition, and that can be found in Appendix E. I'll touch on construction and operation briefly, because the main thing I want to discuss is the third bullet, which is decommissioning, but if approved, the project would move into a pre-construction phase and work extensively with Mr. Love and the Planning Department to achieve the necessary permits, et cetera, that would still have to take place before construction could start. Construction would be estimated to take, you know, less than eight, less than eight or 10 months, excuse me, after construction is complete. The project will be a quiet neighbor with basically no traffic, no noise, and 24/7 remote monitoring for performance and safety for the life of the project. During the project life, there's no permanent onsite staff, minimal to nonexistent traffic, and no lights. It's important to remember that the vegetation, which would be the buffer or pollinator-friendly plants below the panels, would be required to be maintained by the product itself for the full life of the project. The facility is designed to last up to 40 years, and that's actually when the agreement with the landowner also expires. This might seem like a long time, but remember that the panels are designed specifically to be outside in the elements and to generate electricity for that amount of time. This sort of brings us to the end of the project's operational life, and we get a lot of questions about this. Per some of the conditions that are included, the entire facility will be required to be removed at the end of the useful life, and the materials will be resold, repurposed, or recycled as practical. The decommissioning process will require oversight and approval by the county, and it will be entirely paid for by the project, not the landowner, not the neighbors, not the taxpayers. To guarantee this, there's, I think, extensive decommissioning bonding requirements in place, and I think that gets updated every five years to ensure the capital is always available to remove the project no matter what. After decommissioning the land, which is still owned by the landowner, we would just operate under a lease agreement, the land can be returned to its previous use at the So as I mentioned earlier, we feel that North Branch Solar is the right size. It's in the right place, and it provides many benefits to Prince Edward County. Solar electricity generation is a safe and reliable technology which helps to stabilize electricity prices. North Branch Solar is well-sighted with setbacks and buffering, mitigating viewshed impacts to nearby properties. In recent years, solar development has been under intense scrutiny, much more than other similar development types, and that list sort of on the lower right there does indicate some, but not all, of the additional agencies and reviews that are required prior to a construction start. The project will generate over $380,000 for Prince Edward County without the accompanying draw on county services, and the project will be a quiet rural neighbor for the life of the project, will have a low impact compared with alternative uses, and will preserve, excuse me, the remainder of the parcel for ag or silver culture at the owner's discretion for decades. And that does conclude formal presentation. I appreciate the time, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
I have two.
Yes, sir.
You said no one is there on a daily basis that you monitor. If you monitor satellite, you have cameras set up?
So it's not cameras necessarily or satellites, but there'd be a direct connection, communication line, to the utility company. So they're looking at a couple things. One of them is clearly energy production during the day, but that would also indicate any faults or issues that could arise. If some of the panels stopped working or there was some sort of faulty connection, they would know about it immediately.
And do you do a monthly inspection? Somebody actually goes to the facility and drives through and double-checks things?
Yeah, typically, there is sort of an O&amp;M sort of manual. There's, you know, certainly during the growing months, there would be grass maintenance, vegetation maintenance. There would be, I'm not quite sure how many annual checks there may be for the actual equipment itself, but I would imagine that's... Trevor, for a little feedback?
Yeah, I mean, typically, when a project starts, there's more regular, regular checks, but once it's into operation, usually every six, 12 months, there's a very thorough inspection of the site. That's on top of what you'd see naturally through your regular maintenance inspections through vegetation.
I'm sorry, this is Mr. Trevor Francis. He's our VP of Engineering.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. How many projects has Sun Tribe developed so far, solar projects?
I'm going to guess, so don't like hold me to this. Between some of our school and commercial industrial projects, I would say that the number is probably north of 80, but... number is probably north of eighty, but for these small projects this size, we've successfully permitted five in the last year or so and have varying sizes, I'm gonna guess in the twenties maybe for the utility scale size I looked at. Again, I could get you that figure if you want.
That's okay. I'm just curious. A follow-up question is, how many of those projects does Sun Tribe still own?
So, great question.
Or what percentage roughly?
I'm not sure if I can answer that, not because I'm trying to be coy with you. I can maybe answer this a different way, because I feel like you might be asking, is it likely that this project will be owned by someone other than Sun Tribe? So, I'm happy to answer that. It's very likely that someone other than Sun Tribe could own and operate this long-term, and when you think about that, that might seem like a red flag, but the most likely owner is honestly someone like Dominion, like a utility company. They obviously have state-level goals, come down from the governor's office, et cetera, and the SEC to own and manage projects, but there are other private companies, other energy developers and companies that also operate projects. For example, the project that we developed that's being constructed on Elam Road, Sun Tribe Development developed that, and then it was sold to a company called Dimension that also owns a couple of other projects in Prince Edward County. The last thing, and I don't mean to belabor this, if the project were to change hands, the project itself, the LLC, is made up of a sort of collection of legally binding agreements, and that's agreements with the landowner that are enforceable, right? That's agreements with the utility company to interconnect and/or to sell the power, and this special use permit, if approved, is also, you know, legally binding agreement with the county here. So, even if the name changed on the ownership, all of those things would be required to be met, anything that's agreed to here unless both parties agree to a change.
Okay. And then my last question for you right now is, has your company, or if not you directly, any of the projects that y'all have constructed, have any of those projects reached their full lifespan and been decommissioned yet?
Good question. The short answer is no. I've been doing this for about five years. The company's been around for a little less than ten. As you've maybe heard, the projects are expected to last much longer than that, so I haven't personally decommissioned any projects. Our sister company is actually working on a proposal with Dominion to decommission one of those projects. It might seem sort of foreign to build something and think about having to take it apart later, but it really is, it should be a fairly simple and sort of non-exotic process. You know, the panels are sort of bolted to the racks, the racks are attached to the steel piles, you know. It could be as simple as sort of like taking the pieces back apart, and then you pull the piles up, sort of like you pull a fence out of the ground. So, and again, there's a decommissioning plan and agreement that would have to be agreed upon with the county, and the money would be in place to remove that. I believe certified by a professional engineer for the pricing.
Do you have an idea where, how your sister company?
I'm sorry, you're both speaking at the same time.
Go ahead, Robbie.
All the construction estimates, we have an engineer looking at decommissioning estimates like likely with stormwater bonding, and we have a consultant to help us with those.
Do you have any, this is really getting into the weeds, but do you have any idea where your sister company is decommissioning the panels, how they're handling that? Are they looking at recycling them or landfill? Because I've heard that landfills are hard to come by to find one that accepts these, and recycling them is very expensive.
So, the first approach is a hundred percent recycling, and I know they've gotten two quotes to recycle the panels in the states. My last review, there are about twenty-six recycling centers specific to solar in the U.S. About half of those are east of the Mississippi. There's two in North Carolina. Those are probably the closest two to this facility. So, that's the first option right there.
Right.
Actually, I should take that back. The first option is actually to repurpose the panels, and what that means is to sell them to someone else who continues to generate electricity, because the panels will continue to operate even longer than forty years, you know. They're not just gonna stop at forty years. Recycling would be the second option. Sun Tribe has actually recycled panels for another project that we built, I wanna say, three years ago.
Okay.
It was a small number of panels, but it is possible it can be done. In that instance, we had a contract with a company, and they came and picked them up, and they took them and recycled.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, I guess you and I are back at it again.
Yes, sir. Nice to speak to you.
That's right. Just a couple of quick questions. You talked about native grasses. Do you know by any chance what they consider to be native grasses?
I don't, but the last time we talked about this, we worked with, I think, someone, Timmons, and they provided a landscape architect, they'll provide the species list. I'll be the first to admit that I'm not gonna tell y'all what native grasses are.
I understand that. I was just looking through the packet there just a minute ago, and I guess it was you or someone stayed at the public hearing, that solar's been around a long time, but you said that you've only been with it for five years. If it's been around for a long time, and I'm not arguing that at all, I'm gonna go with, why has the fire and rescue not been trained if it's been around a long time? Why is that just a new up-and-coming thing, and why do they know nothing about it? And I'll parlay that to Lou also, because he's on it. Have you ever known of any training for fire and rescue at all with solar, or what to do with, or how to do, or anything of the nature?
We've had discussions, but no training that I've had to dissect.
I could speak maybe to a little bit of that, but probably not, well, you'll see in a second, I'm not a fire expert either. Just for the project specifically, there is a condition about providing some EMS training, and really, that is training about the facility itself for this specific project, if we get to that point. Again, we've gone through that plan process with our other project in Elam. It was approved by Mr. Love and Mr. Pyle, so I think we've met the condition there with regards to the specific facility. The second part of the question, and this did come up at the Planning Commission a little bit, I'm not a fire safety expert. There are third parties that could come in and help train, you know, this fire department anywhere in the state or the country on electricity, solar-specific fire potential. In a little bit of Google searching, you might see that places like California, there are resources out there and training seminars that are available. I don't know a lot about them. I'll just admit that I haven't done the research there. I have not been involved in training a fire department for that, but it is possible. I think the last thing that I'll mention is that the facility itself is not inherently flammable, you know, like some other structures might be. I mean, it's just glass, excuse me, grass, and then panels above it, and also, the facility is entirely self-contained, so there shouldn't be any risk to human or really property outside of the facility itself.
I think there's already been at least two in the state of Virginia, east of here, that was caused by a line being cut or something of nature and set on fire, and the rescue or the fire department really didn't know what they could do. So, that's a concern of mine. There are so many inconsistencies, and I'll just start with just a few of them so that we don't belabor this all night, maybe just half the night. But if you go to, on there, page one sixty-one, which I realize you don't have that, it talks about traffic, and that it won't increase traffic or anything else, and then about two lines later, it says that there's gonna be twenty-five to forty trips a day with tractors and trailers. I own a trucking company, so I know a little bit about that. I also know that they're gonna cross, come into Llama Road, if I'm not mistaken, which is a terrible place on forty-seven to come into.
Okay.
You got a copy of it there? I'm on page one forty-six is where I reference this to. Think all this traffic is gonna come off of what we consider forty-seven. You call it Thomas Jefferson Highway, it's the same highway, onto Llama Road, and then along the railroad tracks down to that property. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and I may not have mentioned, I believe it's in the packet there, we had a consultant, Dewberry, do a sort of preliminary traffic memo to look at that and make sure that that was a feasible and a safe crossing.
I understand that completely, but he doesn't drive trucks.
That is likely true.
I do. I travel that road anywhere from three to five times a day.
Yes, sir.
I know the traffic problems. I know that Llama Road's a problem. I know there's a short distance between forty-seven and the railroad tracks, so that if there's a train on there, tractor and trailer will not fit between forty-seven and the train tracks. So, therefore, you got Llama Road blocked up, and you got forty-seven blocked up, and you've got a problem with railroad tracks. That's just a traffic issue which it somewhat addresses, but doesn't give us any explanation as to what's gonna be done or whatever else for twenty-five to forty trucks a day during that phase. It says that it generates no traffic, but that's where we are. Second question, along with traffic, who pays for the wear and tear on Llama Road, which I'm sure is a state road? Go ahead, Robbie.
I can answer that. And I want to state first that the Elam roadside is on construction is the first site in Prince Edward County that we're administering under these new rules.
Correct.
Just getting built, I'm gonna be clear on that. We did collect on that site, which we would collect if this improved.
Correct.
A bonding number. When they sent me that bonding number on Elam Road, I sent it to our engineer, I also sent it to Brian Locker with VDOT. So, I had that oversight looked at. We did collect a bond.
Do you know how much it was by any chance?
It wasn't that much, it was about fifty-five hundred, I think it was.
That's less than nine hours' work with the D.
And that was for the Elam Road section. Yeah, I'm sorry. But that was accepted. If we do have a condition in our redevelopment schedule, that if we have consultant services or we have a statement in there, if VDOT has hard costs, that the developer would reimburse VDOT, so we would engage the developer if we had damage once the site construction phase is done. We're gonna get Mr. Locker or someone, Scott Frederick's choosing, to come out and do an inspection of the roads. That would happen post-construction, soon as the traffic is done. That will occur on the Elam roadside, and that'll be kind of the first time we get to do that. Also, just speaking on training, Trey's gonna be working with Sun Tribe on that site to do the training, set up the training with the fire departments, and have them come in, really have, we're the first county that I'm aware of that touches us, that requiring the training, firing, emergency management plan. So, I'm hopeful that that's gonna give you all the board, once we have that site a little bit further along in construction, hopefully, you'll be getting some feedback from your fire departments. But Trey is gonna help me with that as emergency management director, to make sure that the proper training gets done and that we're working with the developer on that. I did speak on that earlier, but I thought I'd better add that to your comments.
I'm gonna not jump on you just quite yet, but part of that'll tie into something else. Page one sixty-eight, it talks about a seven-foot fence, not less than seven foot, which is required by the National Electric Code, and if you look down through here, it's only considered a six-foot, so that's an inconsistency. If it's required seven-foot, why in the world would anybody come to the board and say that they're only gonna put up a six-foot fence when it's done by the national code? That's either...
So, can I comment to that?
Absolutely.
I could be wrong, because I'm not quite sure where the six-foot reference is coming, but oftentimes, six-foot fence with a foot of barbed wire over top, which would be the seven-foot total. I could be wrong, but I hope that's what we meant.
I can't tell you what you meant. I just know that, and I have those notes somewhere else, but in the actual application, it says that you all would do a six-foot fence. But on page one sixty-eight, it says that required by the National Electric Code, there has to be no less than seven-foot. Is that correct? Am I reading that correct?
So, one sixty-eight, we definitely say seven-foot, and that's typical for the projects.
Okay. Well, in either in the Planning Commission and/or wherever else I read last night, that it was only a six-foot, so I just wanted to say that there's inconsistency there.
Can I ask, Rob? I mean, I imagine we would put in whatever was allowed at Elam, so I think that could be, and I apologize, there's a consistency.
Well, if you all run the projects in Elam, it has to be seven-foot according to the National Electric Code, whether Frontera County says you can use six or not. That has nothing to do with this board right here. That's on you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On page one sixty-nine, erosion and sediment. If for some reason that there is a problem, who pays and what are the penalties?
Rob, I'll probably defer that to you.
Yeah. Look, on the Elam roadside, and if they approve, I'll be clear, if they approve to us, apply to us, and we're, because we are scoreable or voting, we would assess the penalty.
Penalties, okay. So, it'd be the county, be up to the county?
We would collect the penalty.
All right. So, that'd be the county.
If they decide to apply directly to DEQ, which I believe they can, then DEQ would assess a fine, a penalty, as you say.
Penalty, that's right.
And they would collect the penalty. So, it really depends on, it's either gonna be DEQ, if they are the governing authority on the stormwater unit, stormwater board, they do like they did in Elam and apply to us. On this site, they can apply to us. The larger utility steel sites, they can't apply to us.
Correct.
But this one can come to us.
Page one seventy-one, decommissioning, but before we get to decommissioning, let's just say that we do approve this. Do you know who the panels are made by, that are gonna be used there?
At this point, the panels have not been selected specifically.
So, you have no idea if they're gonna be by First Solar or anybody else?
At this point, it hasn't been selected. There's a variety of tier-one modules, typically called in the States, that most operators choose to install.
I'm gonna divert from you one moment, and I'm gonna talk to the board. If for some reason they are selected by First Solar, First Solar...
Which one?
The panels. If either one happens to be, if First Solar happens to be the maker of them, they're made in the United States. With that said, they're the only company that still uses cadmium and graphite. There's no safety data sheet, which without a safety data sheet means that the county is responsible, no matter how many bonds, no matter how many sureties they put up, no matter what, the county is gonna be the one responsible for decommission and/or whatever else. It's been brought up here tonight that it's legally binding, whatever else, the attorney is right here, legal and binding is only up to a judge. It also has to be brought before a court system, which means that somebody has to pay to bring the court action to make them prove to whatever else to begin with, which eats up money. That's just what I'm telling the board, that has nothing to do with them, because they haven't chosen exactly who's gonna make the panels yet. Page one seventy-one, with the, page one seventy-one, talking about decommissioning and disposal of them, or where to go with them, or whatever else. Unless something has changed, there is not a landfill east of the Mississippi that will accept them if they have certain things in them, and that's the reason why I'm asking who they're made by, to find out whether they can be disposed of here or whether they have to go west of Mississippi.
So, I'm not familiar with the restriction to east or west of the Mississippi as far as disposal, if they did go to a landfill. The panels are effectively inert. I've provided, I know the Massachusetts study on page five talks pretty specifically about the hazardous or lack thereof nature of the panels, but again, I haven't called the local landfills. I don't know why there'd be a restriction, but typically...
Some of those very same companies in the past that did research, one of the researchers that they did was on Teflon, which was used in pans and things of the nature where everybody had in their homes, and they're directly related to cancer, carcinogens, and everything else. So, just to say that a company had that, the same thing with ethyl gasoline, which was lead, which everybody used at one time in order to take the spark knock out of engines. The gentleman who developed that and decided to use lead would come to a place just like this and put it on his hands and rub his hands around and tell he was no good. He died of cancer because of it. So, just to say that a company came along and gave you all whatever, I'm not saying it has anything to do with you as a company, but that doesn't prove that it is not harmful. That's where I'm getting at. Page one ninety-four with the testing. It says that it's gonna be done every so often. Didn't we change that at our last one?
We did. This should be the new template.
This should be the new template. All right, that's all I need to know.
Yep.
On page one ninety-six, number thirty-seven, I'll give you time to get there. Sorry, I didn't have all this easier for you. I did this in the middle of the morning this morning while working on something else. Sorry about that. One ninety-six, number thirty-seven, it says that any change of party responsible for decommission of facility or change in any part of the contract information reported to county ministry within sixty days. I would say to the board, I think it's absolutely crazy to allow someone to change ownership of something and let us know sixty days later when it's gonna be up to us as to how we see fit. That's to the board, not to you, sir. If you look on number forty, it says that the amount of surety bond shall be required of a hundred percent of estimated decommission cost, less the scrap purpose. If you go on, it just talks about how that should the funds not be guaranteed on page one ninety-nine, number forty-three. Should funds guaranteed for the commission activities for any reason not be sufficient? Well, if it's guaranteed, how in the world could it not be sufficient? It's just a way to let somebody out of something. You're more than welcome to ask the county attorney right here that, I mean, if it's guaranteed, how, why would we need something in there to allow them to get out of?
I think to a...
I think they're referring to, because we have a decommissioning estimate that's provided by an engineer and reviewed by our engineer, right, Rob?
Yes, sir, and it's repeated five years. What this actually does, if I, is they shall remain liable for the difference.
Yeah.
So if someone...
Who is "they"?
That, North Branch Solar, it's written in number forty-three.
Whether it's successor or assigned, whoever owns the project.
So it will be Dominion.
So if they get a vendor, if we, let's say worst-case scenario, we have to get a vendor out, we pull a bond, in forty years, we have a vendor go out there and they charge us more, and we're going to hit them, the company for the difference, to make up the difference in the bond from the actual commissioning activity. But, I mean, we'll be checking it every five years, but you know, the construction world, things can change by the year.
All right, absolutely.
I'm not going to...
Right. That's the reason why I'm saying what I'm saying, is that we're, in order to make, in order to make Dominion or any other company, then you're going to have to take them to court. They're not, if the money's not there, they're not going to come and just say, oh, by the way, y'all did a good job, we're going to give you an extra two million, or three million, or five million, or seventeen million, or thirty million, or whatever else. That's just the way that works. Would you say, Terry, that it would have to be, it'd have to go to court?
May or may not. They may pay.
I guess what I would say to the board, I think that there's just umpteen things here that's red flags. It scares me to death that we continue to look at projects and things that we don't know what the outcome is or anything else, that's where I'm at. My personal opinion, and thank you very much, I've, nothing else to you, sir, this is all to the board. I would love to see the county put some type of moratorium or something for a year to see what in the world these projects are, what's going to turn out, what's going to happen, whatever else. That's just my opinion to the board, thank you very much for your time, sir.
May I respond?
And you're more than welcome to respond to anything.
No. Any other questions, I suppose? Thank you, Mr. Emmert.
Madam Chair, we have two people signed up to speak tonight.
Okay. We're going to open a public hearing.
The first one is Chloe Hodges.
Hi, everyone, I'm Chloe, I think I've met most of y'all before, but I'm here today on behalf of Energy Right. We're a nonprofit that help localities navigate the changing energy landscape from a conservative perspective, so that's why I'm here today. Our mission is to make sure that we're following all of the above energy plan in the state of Virginia, as well as making sure we're doing energy the right way, and that projects of any kind, any type of energy, are good neighbors and add value to the community. The only real thing I wanted to say today is that I hope you consider the property rights of the landowners when thinking about these projects, and the impact it can make on the landowner and how they can diversify their income, especially with small-scale projects for small landowners, and how impactful that can be for citizens. Ultimately, you all are the board in Prince Edward County, and you know the county better than I do, you know your constituents better than I do, so it's never my, I never want to tell you all how to vote, but I do always want to be a resource to you all. So if you ever have questions about different types of energy in the state of Virginia, please feel free to reach out to me, thanks so much.
Does anyone have any questions for Chloe? Okay.
Next speaker, and please excuse me if I get it incorrect on the name, but Andrew Elder from Pamplin.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board Supervisors. My name is Andrew Elder, I think I'm from Buffalo District. How y'all doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
I am basically a landowner right beside Mr. McClanny. I have no fault for having this right next to me. There'll be one behind me, actually, in the foreseeable future as well. So I am for Mr. McClanny, well, Mrs. McClanny, for this to be on her land and her property. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further questions, anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure?
I'll keep this brief, I appreciate Mr. Emmert's feedback, and I mean that sincerely. Feedback like that does help us make projects better, no matter what county we're working in. I'm just going to just comment on two things, just real quick. You brought up some traffic concerns at the beginning.
Yes, sir.
Completely agree, safety is paramount whenever we're doing this. I would sort of lean on Rob a little here, I know there's a condition about a construction traffic management plan. I can only imagine that VDOT would allow us to get an approved plan if there's going to be concern that a vehicle can't make that turn, or there's concerns about the train tracks. If there were concerns, I think I would just highlight that I believe there are a variety of sort of real-world applications, such as shorter trucks, traffic management, sort of like flaggers and additional, excuse me, delivery schedules, that could help mitigate those concerns. So I appreciate you raising that, I think there's some potential options there to help with that. The second one is sort of related to the panel makeup and safety. You raised some good points, and I can't speak to some of the examples that you used. I can only provide the information, the facts that I have right now, and that is largely the handful of studies and resources that we provided in the application. So strongly believe that the panels are safe and will not cause harm to the property or the county. I think that's all I have to say, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Board? Is there a motion?
I would just say that my, I live around a bunch of professors who are environmentalists, and I quiz them occasionally about these things. They do not at all live in fear, I wish I had had a couple of them here tonight to speak of the projects, of this type of project. It, I read neighboring counties who are way, way opposed. It, I don't, the harsh criticism that I read and hear about is rarely from someone who is an environmentalist. And I think if we, if these projects are legal, to have a small one surrounded by bigger property, you know, out-of-the-way location whose neighbor is not offended by it, I think it's a, and I think we have a diligent planning commission who recommended we approve it, and I will make a motion that we approve it as presented.
Is that with the conditions as proposed?
Yes, with the conditions as proposed by the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion, can we get a second? Second. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Mr. Gillum?
I will have to abstain for a vote, I have a family member that has a jointing property.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jenkins, I apologize, sir, I was looking at Lou, I apologize. That would be nice, yes.
I thought I had done something wrong.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Emmert? Patty Cooper-Jones, yes.
The next public hearing is related, it is consideration of the siding agreement, which has been negotiated by the county administrator on your behalf with North Branch Solar. This is, uh, this does require a public hearing pursuant to fifteen-point-two-dash-two-thirty-six, two-three-one-six-point-eight-B. This was properly advertised in the Forum or Herald, joining property owners were sent a letter, you've got that sample letter in your packet. The agreement with North Branch Solar is for this three-megawatt site. It includes a one-time upfront voluntary payment of forty-five thousand dollars, which equals fifteen thousand per megawatt, plus an annual payment of fourteen hundred per megawatt, Attachment Five, they did update the economic and fiscal contribution. It should be noted, in the state code, there is a CPI multiplier, so the fourteen hundred does go up over a period of time and increase that annual rate, but you have those totals in the siding agreement on the last page. I think, we prepared, at the request of a board member, we prepared kind of a spreadsheet of some of the approved projects, it shows what we've been doing. This site, like I said, at fifteen thousand megawatts on the voluntary payment, exceeds some of those older sites, and I will say that the fourteen hundred per megawatt with the multiplier is in state code, so we can't add to that. That is something that's, the framework is in place for these type of facilities. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Love? If not, I will open the public hearing, is there anyone who cares to speak?
I don't have anything to say, I'm happy to answer questions.
No one? We close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure?
One thing I forgot to say is, it's a pleasure to be voting on something that brings us money rather than spending money. Obviously, we have a lot of things that we have to pay for.
Do we get a motion?
I'll move that we approve the, is it site rep, how do we word this?
It's worded as, approve the siding agreements with North Branch Solar LLC for the proposed three-megawatt solar energy facility.
All right, I, now see, I move the Board of Supervisors to approve the siding agreements with North Branch Solar LLC for the proposed three-megawatt solar energy facility.
It's been moved and properly seconded, Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
I will abstain again for the same reason, family member.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say to them that I will not deny you your siding agreement because of even being against it. So notice.
Thank you, sir.
So let it be moved.
Okay, this time we'll do Highway Matters.
Good evening, members of the board, I'm standing in for Scott Frederick tonight, and would be happy to record any Highway Matters and share those back with VDOT if you have any concerns you'd like to share.
Thank you for cutting the Johnson grass off the Five Forks Road.
Yes, sir.
He's got many more to go, though.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that I had family members off Five Forks Road who, about two weeks ago, said you couldn't even tell if you had highway or grassway, and they were very thankful that the grass was cut.
It was one lane and just...
Yep, that's what it was. So they were very thankful, they wanted to thank the board for getting that grass cut. Anyone else have Highway Matters?
Blooming field road, the grass is so high. Three deer had gone across the road, so I stopped for those. I moved, and then a fourth one came and damaged my SUV. All that high grass, I mean, you can't see anything. Well, the very next day, a mile from that accident, a black bear, the biggest black bear I had ever seen, was on the right side of my other vehicle. I said, please, don't you push me. So that grass needs to be cut badly.
I saw my first bear in your district a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
First time I've seen a bear in, I guess, twenty-five years, I went wrong time.
I think I understand that they've started mowing the secondaries, right?
They should be about done with secondaries, and I think October one, they will start primaries, because you have to wait till wildflower season's over on the...
I know they're doing some mowing on primaries, because I've seen, yeah, they're on four-sixty out at west of Prospect.
But just like right at the corner of the intersection.
Is that what they're doing, just site distance? Okay.
Then you can get the memo.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. She's standing in for your person.
I'll take this.
All right.
On page two-fifty-seven, we have five-pillar meat master performance agreements. The county was awarded a grant from the Tobacco Commission for the development of the five-pillar meat processing facility. Project was approved for funding January one, twenty-twenty-three, for seventy-five thousand dollars. A twenty-five thousand dollar match from the county is required. Performance agreement is needed before any grant funding can be dispersed on a reimbursement basis. Master agreement has been drafted to address the local incentives. Basically, this site, in the enterprise zone, we're using the incentives paid out over a ten-year period to match the Tobacco Commission grant. At the August twenty-third meeting, the IDA approved master agreement, performance agreement, authorized the chairman and staff to sign all necessary documents required. The agreements now need to be approved and signed by the Board of Supervisors. This is very similar to other incentive grants that we've done in previous projects.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Powell?
No, actually, we need a vote, Madam Chair.
Oh, we need to vote, I apologize.
Bottom of page two-fifty-seven.
I move that the board approve both the five-pillar performance agreement and master agreement.
Second.
Mr. Emmert?
I will just, go ahead.
And authorize the chairman and staff to sign all necessary documents, we'll make sure that's...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes.
Is that operational yet?
Close, but not...
They hope to be up and going by the fifteen, so I'll take it.
Wow, that's great.
Saw his website, looked sharp.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening, board, how are y'all?
Good, how are you?
Hey, just take a quick up minute to give y'all an update on some stuff that we got going on, very, very brief. If y'all remember, about a year ago, I brought in a firefighter from Prospect, James Rufford. We showed y'all what one of the grants provided us. This evening, I've got Chief Daniel Clark from Fire Department. He was hired by the town in September of twenty-two, and has been doing phenomenal things for the department, and also assisting the county, and it's a great asset. So Chief Clark, if you come up, we're going to bring in some of the equipment that we got on the FY twenty-two AFG grant. That grant was a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, with a five percent local match, the fire department's picked up their portion of the grant match. Much like the Airepac grant, the same concept went into this grant. We were looking for something to standardize equipment across the board amongst all seven departments. We were looking for something that was going to increase the benefit to the departments, and also make that ease of training, that way, whatever equipment you pulled off somebody's truck was the same across the board. The original grant was put in for thermo imaging cameras. So these cameras, which is the red camera sitting on the table right there, is used to look through walls, so you can see heat inside walls, you can see heat inside ceilings, really keeps down on damage on houses. Someone calls and says, hey, I got this smell in my house, or I got, my wall feels a little hot, whatever, you take the camera, cut it on, you can see through the wall, you can tell if there's a fire in there, you can tell how hot it is, and that such. We were able to secure twenty-four of those cameras, so basically each department got roughly three. It was all dependent on what the department needed, so some got three, some got two, I think one department got four. That came with truck chargers, that came with two batteries, and that also came with the gear keeper to clip it onto your gear. That purchase, due to the quantity that we purchased, and the time that we purchased them, we were able to save about eighty thousand dollars on our initial grant. So then we were looking at, what are we going to buy, extra? So then we were looking at what we going to buy extra because we never want to give money back to the government when they give it to you, right? So the departments got together and we talked about something else that would benefit the departments as a whole, something else that costs a decent amount of money that nobody really has the extra funds to buy on a regular basis. That's where the second purchase came up. The fan that you see in the floor right here, we'd sat around and talked. Pamplin had just bought two of these fans when they bought their new fire truck. So we thought that it was a benefit that if the rest of the county had the same fan. Much like everything else in the world, everything's going battery powered. So nothing plugs in anymore, not to have a generator run stuff. This fan right here runs off of two D-Walk batteries that are in the back of it. They're interchangeable, so you can swap them out with two new batteries, or you can run it off of a shoreline from a generator if need be long term. Very lightweight, you saw, you saw Chief Clark just pick it up and put it on the table. He rolled this in here today by itself. The handle folds down, fits nice and compact in the truck. The other benefit is a lot of departments in the county run D-Walk battery powered tools. The batteries that are on here are the Flexvolt batteries. So you can take that battery off and put on an Impactor, you can take it off and put it on a Salzall. So a lot of departments have started transitioning all their batteries to that format. That way, you can never grab the wrong battery, you can always have the right setup. That, that's been a really good asset. I know multiple departments have used them in time, they're, with the portability of them, not being tied to a generator, you can take it in the house, you can use it outside the house. It's, it's flexibility and the maneuverability of it is really great. With your remaining amount of money, and each department got two of those, except Pamplin got one, so every department.
Flip it on. Your old man works. Cool for now.
Approximately, what's the longevity of the batteries?
Full, full speed, about 40 minutes.
Yeah, and then life, life expectancy is just like anything lithium, it's going to be two to three years depending on usage charges. The other benefit to having battery powered, non, not having gas powered fans, which is traditionally what we've had, you can use that in, inside of a structure, you can also use it to get odors out, or you can use it for rehab. You can cut that on on a hot day, people can walk in front of it to get blowed off and cool off, they're not inhaling those fumes that are being blown on from a gas engine. So again, battery powered, you know, non-combustible engines is definitely a benefit.
You have your turnip gear on and it happens to be 100 degrees outside and then you're out, I mean, out of a building that has heat in it, that's a fine thing to have.
It is, it is. They make different accessories for them, you can get misters and stuff like that, so you could actually have it misting air, cool water, air in front of you. Of course, we, we use what we could to maximize our purchase, we didn't get some of those finer accessories. The final thing we went through and looked at was, and most departments had some of these already, but it was just increasing the cache of tools that we carry. On the table there is a four gas monitor that's used for sampling air in your environment that you're in. It looks for oxygen, combustibles, I think that one's set up for hydrogen if I'm not mistaken, is it? Yeah. So responder can cut that on, it goes to a series of quick tests, you can clip it on your gear, you can hold it in your hand, walk around. If you run into combustibles, you learn into a low oxygen environment, something in the air is taking the oxygen saturation below normal, it'll alarm you and you know there's something going on, you need to get out. Each department got one of those to add to their cache of tools they already had. So total, in total, we took a grant that was supposed to be 20 thermal imaging cameras that we passed around, we turned it into 24 cameras, 13 of these fans and eight of those gas monitors in place in the county. Each matched for each department, if I had to guess, just right off the top of my head, probably didn't spend no more than $500 total. So that fan is a $4,500 fan and they paid probably 250 bucks on the dollar at the end of the day. So very, very good opportunity. That's like I said, second time we've done it, this is, the air pack was the first one we did for, we finalized the Keno standardized and that. This is the second one, we standardized equipment across the board. The radio project obviously is getting the same boost because now with the grant money, everybody, we were going to have the same radios anyway, that gives us a little bit more capabilities on the radio because we're getting a little higher tier radio because of the grant money. So again, you can see the theme here is standardized, operating together, making everything across the board interoperable. Dan, you have any comments you want to make about it?
I just want to thank y'all's support for the fire departments all throughout Prince Edward County. Thank Trey for his due diligence, his efforts to do the research, get the quotes, estimates, and apply these grants for us. You know, everybody applying as a group gives us a better chance to be awarded these large grants. These are nationwide grants that he's applying for for us. Just like you mentioned, interoperability, you know, if I go out to Prospect or to Rice, everybody's using the same type of equipment. So if I go to somebody else's fire, somebody else comes to town to help us, we're all using the same equipment, everybody knows how everything works. You know, with the D-Walk batteries, they're universal, if we need a new battery, we can go to Lowe's and buy a new battery. Or you have that same battery we're working on our Salzall, our drills in the truck. But it's just interoperability of all the agencies working together. And I said Trey's on a great job helping us get to that point.
Any other questions on the grant?
I just want to say thank you both for your services.
Darn right.
Thank you.
Have you come up with anything to since you've been around yet?
No. We were leaving, we were leaving that up to Dallas to figure out, yeah. The, the, the other quick update I have is on the radio system. I know I really haven't given y'all much update recently, it's just getting through the paperwork and the details of the system. I got notified into last week, the frequencies that we applied for, we've been granted by the FCC, the paperwork's sitting on my desk, so that's been locked in. They're currently working on finalizing the tower sites. So the tower sites go through a rigorous study, they have to do site planning, they have to do structural analysis of the tower site. The owner of the tower site has to come back and say, yeah, you can be at 200 feet or no, you got to be at 199, you know, that's based on their calculations. So we're working on finalizing all that because we need to get draft leases together so we can start working through that process because obviously, nobody wants to give us anything for free. So once we get the draft leased, then we can go back and start to the table and start negotiating to get that price down as low as we possibly can. Right now, we're still on track to be spring of '26 going on, probably late spring of '26. The plan is to try to back that up to the winter time. It all depends on when we can get on the towers and get talk, coverage testing done. They will not test the system unless there's full foliage on the trees. So we've got from about April to October to do that. If we can back it up and get the testing done before October, we'll probably be live winter of '25. If not, it's going to be spring, first of summer of '26. But that is the initial plan anyway, we were just trying to speed it up a little bit. So that's, that's all I got, really. You know, we had tropical storm come through, we fared weather on, fared well on that. We had one water rescue successful. We had a couple of roads get washed out and do some damage, but other than that, everybody was pretty safe. Western side of the county got hit pretty hard, nine inches of rain there in about six hours. But other than that, town had a little bit of flooding, Lake North Main closed down for a couple of hours in the middle of the night, which couldn't ask for a better time to close, middle of the night. But other than that, I'll answer any questions y'all have for me on emergency management, public safety, any of that.
I'm just going to say, speaking of fire, y'all probably don't know that Dicky Ingram on the Nottaway County Board of Supervisors lost his family home place Sunday night, a total loss. His brother is in the hospital, he was in the house and in critical care. Keep me in thoughts, Brad, he's a great guy, if y'all know him.
Thank you.
Trey, quick question.
Yes.
Back to what I was talking about a few minutes ago. What, what is available or is there anything available and why have they not? With, with all the mandates from the state and everything else, why have they not required you all to know something about solar?
So the short answer that I can come up with right off the top of my head, and I've been in fire service 20, 20 plus years now, is because it's just not here, nobody thought of it. And I'll give you an example of something that's been around longer, probably just as long and just started coming more relevant is electric vehicles. They, they've been around for years. Just last legislation cycle, last year, I think, they put a mandate out to fire programs. You've got to come up with a training program for, for electric vehicles for the first responders. They put a mandate behind it, we don't know how they're going to force it because there's no enforcement action behind it or regulatory authority behind it. But it tells you where we are as a training organization with the state, they're behind even on that. You know, we know electric vehicles, we know they, they burn, we know they burn hot. Putting them out is almost impossible once they get going. The training just came out, we, we've got one more year to do it. Now, I have been in contact, and I, and I'll, I'll use Suntribe since they were just here. I've been in contact with their safety, their safety people. They are the first ones that submitted the emergency response plan to the county. I went through it, made sure we tweaked it, got everything that we needed to have in it in place, approved it so they could continue and go on with construction. I've asked for certain stuff to, to happen when we go to do training, I've asked for a panel to be on site that we can see that's damaged, I like to see the insides and the outsides of it. This, this training will open it up to anybody else, any of y'all board members that want to come, you know, see it, feel it, whatever. But I am working closely with them and another one of the solar companies that's in the, in the county trying to put some other sites up because we just don't have that program. I've talked to some guys from Dominion, they'll come out and do some training, but really it's a hands-off approach when it comes to solar, it's no different than a substation. If, if Moran Solar Substation right now caught on fire tonight, you're going to stand out from the outside, you're going to protect the area, and you're going to stand back. It doesn't pose a threat to the hu, to the citizens as long as you keep them away from it, and that's, that's basically the answer you get for solar. We're just going to make sure we protect the area.
It's case in point exactly what I was saying, let it burn.
Yeah, I mean.
So anything that's in that, this is, they're gone and everything else but to the board, that, that's the whole problem. Catch them things on fire, you let them burn, they talk about how tough they are and wherever else, there's nothing that fire won't destroy, absolutely nothing, including steel. So you burn the silicone off of those things and you release all that stuff, it's in the ground, it's in the water, it's everywhere. Happened in Virginia Beach, it, it's, it's a problem, that, that's not direct necessarily,
that's just to the board. And I, and I.
And they say that, that you all, with, with the training, I can give you all the training you need, don't go forward.
Right.
The end.
Right. And.
So why in the world are we even coming up with a, with a plan or whatever else they're going to tell you not doing, and why are we wasting money on mandates or anything else?
Right. And, and there's ways that we're working to make sure we can access the facility to isolate the power so we're not continuing the chain of reaction through the panels, protect the other, you know, minimize the, the property loss there. But again, I, I've, I've been doing some research, I've been working with those folks to get me some material data sheets so we can dig into what's in those panels and get better informed of what's going on. Personally, I'd like to see a, a test that somebody just put in a box and lit one on fire just to see how the gases that come off of it, but I got to dig into that.
Page 194 says that the priority pollutants arsenic, antonium, barium, cadmium, chromium, copper, lead, mercury, nickel, selenium, silver, thallium, and zinc.
Right.
Every bit of it's EPA, if I drop some in the ground, it'd be a threat to, to get my place.
Correct. So.
Plain and simple.
We are still working on it, we're trying to make sure we have a solid program to provide to the responders in Prince Edward County, so.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions?
Thank you. At this time, we're going to authorize a five-minute break.
I, I had one more thing if you wanted to knock that out real quick. You, you sure? Okay. Another reason I had Daniel here tonight is on item number 15 on your agenda is for the board's consideration of resolution for the former fire department to non-transport basic life support first responder services to expand their area into their entire fire district. In 2018, the board authorized a resolution allowing them to respond to emergency medical calls inside the town fumble. And that's where it stopped. We've, we've talked, me and Daniel have talked one-on-one, we had a public safety meeting the other, other week and we talked, we think it's in the best interest of the citizens, primarily their district covers their school systems, that those services be allowed to continue out into their fire district in the county, which incorporates Lowe's, Beck into the town, all of the bypass for the most part, and down to Tom's Country Store. So if you, you're attached as a resolution, basically updating that to allow them to operate within the county of Prince Edward, their district will be set by the, administratively by their district already for fire.
I have to talk to this guy. Chairman Chair, I, I live just outside, I'm down first lane, and, and we had a call to 18 minutes get from Pever's to house next to mine. And, you know, I think it's one of those situations, if you've got responders that are sitting at the station and you have the ability to get them, get there and provide aid, we want the aid wherever it's coming from. You're at the house making the call, you want that aid to get to that house as quickly as you can. So, you know, I think this, this is just going to mean, they're not doing transports, they're not taking any money from Pever's, it just means somebody might be able to get there with the skill set to help you faster.
So moved with the sample motion?
Second.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you, board.
Thank you kindly. Okay, board, you got five minutes. Okay, Board, you got five minutes.
Five minutes.
Good evening again, Board.
Good evening.
The first item is school appropriation and carryover for and CARES Act funding. At the August 13th Board of Supervisors meeting, the Board held a public hearing and tabled the appropriations for the Prince Edward County Public Schools in the amount of $1,45,095.28 in the school operating budget and $1,268,635.11 in CARES Act funding pending the results of the FY '24 audit. After further discussion with the school finance director and Mary Earhart of Rutherford Moss, staff is asking for the funds to be appropriated at this meeting as the funds requested are not carryover funds, but are funds held by the state to be requested each year up to the expenditure of all funds available or expiration of the held funds, whichever is sooner. And there is no local match required for those appropriations.
So moved.
It's been moved. Can we get a second?
Second.
All in fact, no, roll call, I apologize. Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you. The next item is FY '25 P E C P S committed funds appropriation. On page 291, the county received invoices totaling $168,973.76 from Will Scott for the Prince Edward County Elementary School mobile classrooms and an invoice totaling $205,493.60 from Mosley Architects for the renovations to the elementary school. The P E C P S capital improvement committed fund available balance is currently $884,162.33. The Board has asked to transfer $374,467.36 from the P E C P S capital improvement committed funds to the school C I P line within the general fund to cover those expenses.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you. Next item is appropriation for the Juvenile Court Services Unit. During the FY '25 budgeting process, the Juvenile Court Services Unit's request for a budget of $3,000 was inadvertently overlooked. The Board has asked to transfer $3,000 from the contingency line to the Juvenile Court Services Unit's budget as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you. The next item is appropriation for the Sheriff's Office. The sheriff is requesting the Board approve and appropriate $13,000 from the asset forfeiture account in order to acquire a new canine for the department. The remaining $500 needed will be transferred from the Sheriff Department Operations Line item to animal care. Over the six-week training course, the canine and handler will be trained in narcotics and human trafficking.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
The next item is appropriation for Abion Carryover. The county has collected a total of $61,540 to date for the last quarter of FY '24 resulting from our contract with Abion. A total of $41,602.50 was collected in FY '24 and $19,942.50 in FY '25. The Board has asked to approve the carryover from FY '24 and appropriate funds received as follows to cover the cost of the cabin tractor purchase approved in August with the remaining funds towards the capital improvement implementation.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Second. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins? Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Next item is Dusty Ducks Inc. for nine A H U cleaning. In August, the Board approved the quote from Dusty Ducks Inc. for the cleaning of the courthouse returns and supply ducts and V A Vs for $84,283.50. However, the quote also included the cleaning of nine air handler units in the amount of $20,745. The Board has asked to approve the additional $20,745 for the cleaning of the nine air handler units.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Fuel tax refund? Oh, okay.
Fuel's tax.
Fuel's tax. Oh, okay.
371.
Page 371.
Okay.
Is where it starts.
All right.
So I'm back. The first item is school board appropriations to authorize a public hearing for the schools. On September 6th, the county administrator received a letter from the school board requesting an appropriation of $905,976.56 to the school operating budget. For this transaction to take place, the Board will have to authorize a public hearing to amend the FY '25 county and school budgets by the amount of $905,976.56. Good Lord. Way past my bedtime. Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Next item is FY '25 V H R E D A appropriation. The county received an invoice totaling $54,818 from the CRC for the Virginia's Heartland Regional Economic Development Alliance. In FY '25, the Board included an appropriation of $40,000 in the budget for this purpose. The Regional Development Partnership Committed Fund available balance is currently $30,000. The Board has asked to transfer $14,818 from the Regional Development Partnership Committed Funds to the R V P line within the general fund to cover the additional funds needed.
We actually started to put money aside two years ago for this program, and we'll be able to kind of grow into the debt service. But I think we've got $50,000 set aside.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved if I can make that.
Of course.
The CRC won't, because they oversee, is that a mess?
I think you're okay to vote.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you. And my final one is the Afid Infrastructure Grant Match. The CRC received an Afid Infrastructure Grant to establish the Central Virginia Poultry Cooperative. The CRC was awarded $50,000 with the seven counties of the region providing the local match of $3,000 each. The Board has asked to transfer $3,000 from the contingency line to the Afid Infrastructure Grant line as follows.
So moved.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm going to be quick on page 327. I just wanted to share with the Board, as you can see, the county received a check for $127.69, which does not typically require Board action, but we felt like this was a good opportunity for y'all to see, I'm going to say, the scrutiny that the finance staff goes through to try and make sure that they are doing the best job they can for the taxpayers of Prince Edward County. And in this case, Dale Anderson acknowledged that we were, in many instances, paying fuel's tax when purchases of fuel were made outside of what we get from the schools. And so she researched it, she set up the account with DMV, she got all of the information together, she notified all the departments, collected all the receipts. And it's something we'll be able to do more in the future, especially when we have deputies on the road, or social services on the road, or whoever is out and about. But I know Cheryl won't toot her own horn, but just felt like it was a good opportunity for the Board to see what the finance staff does to try and be good stewards of the resources of the county.
Thank you. Great job. Okay. At this time-
Page 17, the county attorney report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Glad to be here with you tonight.
Thank you.
I had to smile when I first saw a memo coming across for me to review a contract for Dusty Ducks. I thought, getting this fun. So anyway, I was like, that's a pretty clever name. But anyway, reviewed that contract, the five pillars. We've reviewed those agreements that are in there. Anyway, several, most of the happening is going on with the I D A, some document review and prep and correspondence and things of that nature. Robbie Love and I went on Monday for a zoning violation. And I've also had inquiry from Commissioner Revenue about a transfer, a name change, and whether that was, had a taxpayer that wanted to go back three years based on a name change of the entity. Anyway, I can't think of any other specifics. It's been, I guess, the months are rolling by, but maybe that's a sign of age and not a sign of anything else. Anybody have any questions, concerns? All righty.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Doe.
With the hour, I'll try to be quick. The county's been notified we're one of 45 winners for the 2024 VACO Awards Program. The DSS Smile Committee project was one of a record 145 applications that were submitted this year. Congratulations to Kim Allen and the DSS team for their project, and thanks to Sarah for writing and submitting the application. VACO will come to our October Board Meeting and do a presentation. Courthouse lawn, staff has approved a request from Fred Hill, who's an advocate from V F W Post 7059, to use the courthouse lawn for a short program honoring service members who remain unaccounted for from the battlefield. The event will be held on September 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., if you're around. Elementary school project, the renovation is out to bid as of August 28th. Bid's submittal date was moved from August, excuse me, September 26th to October 1st to give bidders a couple more days to work on their submittal. We'll keep our fingers crossed for hopefully a low bid. Staff is working with the listing agent on the manor to host a presentation tour of the community in sight to try to get some interest from national builders in Prince Edward County and the manor in particular. We're hoping to pull that off in late October. And lastly, Connect's broadband project staff met virtually with the CRC and Connect staff and representatives for Planet Network. Planet Network is in the process of acquiring Connects. Jim Garrett will still have a stake in the new company. Planet Network is currently in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. They're going to be able to bring additional resources to bear in deploying internet service with our broadband project, particularly increase the number of customer installs per month. And Dr. Pryor, I've told him, we need Bloomfield Road to get moved up that list, so-
Still there.
Hopefully, we'll have some good news soon.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right.
You can't say you're wielding your influence unfairly.
Got that right.
Landfill Construction? Landfill State?
So I turn your attention to page 345 in your table pack.
Yes.
So at its February 2024 meeting, the Board approved the award of the Cell F construction contract to Sergeant Corporation for $1,594. Additionally, the Board approved a motion that authorized the county administrator to approve any necessary change orders in amount up to 5% of that total project costs. Today, yesterday, today or yesterday, the county received two change orders from our engineer. The first, in the amount of $62,350, is an additional, is a change order to, what's the word I'm looking for? Excavate an additional three feet at the bottom of Cell F. And the reason for this was that, once the construction started, Cell, the bottom of Cell F and the bottom of Cell E, which is the one we're working in right now, have to be the same depth because all of the piping that goes to the leachate system has to align. So they learned that the bottom of Cell E was, in fact, three feet lower than the as-built plans were from when it was constructed in 2016. So the additional three feet has been excavated so that we could align the bottom of Cell F and the bottom of Cell E. And that change order amount is $62,350. You'll see that LaBella did some negotiating- You'll see that Lobella did some negotiating on our behalf on that cost with the reduction of the $10,741, the cost of the $10,741 cubic yards at $4 per cubic yard.
I guess somebody can figure out how much value it created to create a little bit of space.
It created additional space. And what we know is that had Lobella had the correct benchmark information, that additional three feet would have been in the original bid, and we would have done that work anyway. So while it was a surprise, there, it's not, it's an error, but it's an error that brings value, because we would have done that work had we known that that benchmark was not off by three feet.
Who did E, who did Cell F?
Sergeant Corporation did the construction, but the plans were by the previous engineering firm. And all of that.
So why didn't they have the benchmark?
I can't answer that. The as-built plans is.
Were incorrect.
Yeah, is what we understand.
Sergeant is responsible for the.
No, no, the engineering firm would have.
Resource was our previous engineering firm.
Right.
They would have done the as-built.
And Sergeant is engineering on this one?
Sergeant is the construction.
Contractor.
The contractor.
Who's the engineering on this one?
Lobella. So Lobella used the data from the as-builts from Cell E to establish the bottom base elevation for Cell F. And then we learned that it, in fact, needed to be three feet deeper.
And Lobella also was the one who did not put the rain shield on, or did not incorporate this into the rain cover.
Yes, so let's talk about the, let's talk about the rain cover. So the solid waste staff has also discovered that a rain cover, which is basically what it is, it's a big sheet of.
Big tarp.
Yeah, tarp.
It keeps water from going into, into the, to keep the difference between stormwater and leachate.
Yes, so to understand the need for a rain tarp. So right now, and love for everybody to come out to the landfill and let Jeff show you what's going on before, you know, as construction is progressing. Right now, we have a, about a four-acre hole in the, in the ground. And they're going to put a liner in it, that's going to be one of the next steps. And then they will slowly start building the trash into the cell. So rainfall that falls and does not go through solid waste is stormwater. Rainfall that falls and hits or comes into contact with solid waste is leachate. So the leachate collection system for the landfill is not built to handle a four-acre leachate collection, because, as you can imagine, right now, while that cell is virtually empty, the rain falls and it immediately flows through to the piping system. And the DEQ regulations only allow you to have one foot of water below your landfill. And let's see, 100, so one inch of rainfall on that new cell is 100,000 gallons. And I'll let you read what that translates into, the number of loads, tanker loads, that it requires us to take to the town of Farmville. So the rain cover enables Jeff and his staff to separate the stormwater from the leachate. And so it is a necessary item, you know, both operationally, but also cost-wise, you know, just the volume of leachate that we would be producing would be very costly, because the town does place a limit on the amount that we can bring to their wastewater plant, which may require us to actually have to find alternate solutions. So.
How does this work?
So it's basically a big tarp, and what they do is they roll back the section and, you know, so that the.
One side of the row is rainwater, one side is.
Yes, sir. And the rainwater that stormwater is piped off and over into the stormwater pond. And I think we explained that it, using the rain cover, the rainwater collected can be pumped over the side of the cell into the stormwater canal, which sheets, sheet flows down through the woods. So it, you know, disperses, but anything that hits waste has to go into the leachate collection system.
Look at, they didn't have nine and a half inches of rain.
Right. Well, and so, so the second change order that we bring to your attention tonight is for $196,481.25. We have had several conversations with Lobella today about this cost. This is an item that's necessary. It's an item that was overlooked. Lobella, I'm going to say, should have known that this.
Therein is my question, we're paying Lobella a gosh-awful amount of money to be engineers, who are supposed to have all of these facts and all of these ideas and everything else. And here they come knowingly. I know who found out that they didn't have it, and that's neither here nor there, that's somebody with no college education, no, no anything that says this is not done. That works at the landfill and has done a great job, that's all beside the point. The simple fact of the matter is that Lobella, all eat this.
Back to the piping and the depth, I guarantee you, they went by that cell's paperwork and didn't incorporate that the pipe had to go under it. That's where the error would make it. I guarantee you.
This kind of reinforces what I've been on a tangent about all night, is that paperwork is not worth a doggone thing, and somebody comes along and says, you owe me more money. That's, that's the whole, the whole premise of everything that I've talked about tonight, is that everybody wants to keep bringing up, well, you hold them responsible, you hold them responsible, you can't do anything but write them a doggone check, people.
We have to accept, now I said we being staff, have to accept that we didn't catch it either. David, I think, and granted.
It's not.
Most of us weren't there.
I usually don't do this, but I'm going to take up for staff on this one right here. The simple fact of the matter is that whoever's running the landfill should have caught this, because he's the one that's had the doggone training on it. And he's not the one that caught it.
Talk about the, I mean, we've spent half the night talking about the benefits of this solar project. These two errors are going to eat up 68% of the total revenue of this whole project's lifespan. 68% of it. Like that.
Says total change order request.
We have not accepted their alternate. We, engineer feels that the cost should be less. But the issue that we're stuck with now is that, you know, we've sent them back, go back and negotiate, try to, what are other alternatives? But waiting a month to come back to the board, this project will be, they will have.
Four to six weeks.
The, you know, the liner will be down and we will have water on it. So we'll be in a situation, either we'll have to call a special meeting, one of the two. I think the way Sarah's worded it is that to approve an amount up to a certain point, but have to get basically concurrence of the properties committee before we sign off on anything. This number should be lower, and we're trying to push them to go lower, but also realizing, Lou, that nine-inch rain could wreak havoc potentially. We would have paid for the liner if we'd had it in there. What we don't want to pay is pay more after bid day than we would have paid one bid day.
If it, if it, if it's necessary and they would have bid it, all bids would have been a higher way to pay for it, but not at this price. I mean, this is.
It wouldn't have been this high, nor in 40 years from now, when we go to clean up our solar facilities, will they be what they're saying they're going to cost.
So.
It'll be double in 40 years if you're lucky.
It'll be triple and quadrupled, and my kids can worry about it. No, they can't, because I don't have them, thank goodness.
But we, yeah, we would have paid on bid day if it had been in the plans.
You all that have them, kids can pay for it. Lobella should have, should have caught this, the people at the landfill should have caught this. I will excuse those at staff at this particular point, because I happen to know what's going on here.
Yeah, I think it's, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, we bid Cell E, they didn't include it, it was a change order.
That is correct.
The county did a change order. Why we didn't learn our lesson the second time, we made the mistake in 2016 or whatever.
2016.
We made the same mistake again.
Now, the county didn't operate the landfill in 2016.
Correct.
That was, it was still under contract in 2016, so the county didn't have employees operating the landfill in 2016.
We had the responsibility to pay for the construction.
That is correct.
In 2016. Now, again, the project is being paid for by funds that were set aside from Buckingham, that we take their trash. So we have a construction account that, you know, we've got three-plus million dollars in it, we have the funds, but we, again, what we don't want to do is pay more than we should for the liner that should have been in the original plans to start with. If that makes sense.
Does that not sound like a shocking price for a tar?
I think it's, it's double what maybe the initial estimate thought would be.
It's about double, that's correct.
It's, and it's, I'm going to say it's special fabric.
Of course.
Yeah, it's. Yeah.
I can't see how you could do this project without having that in it. It's no physical way you can do that.
The only, the only way that you can, and some of them were doing, that have larger leachate ponds that they're allowed to have, that's.
Or they're piped right into wastewater systems.
Or they have, the majority, I shouldn't say majority, a lot of landfills the size of that one has their own leachate facility right there to treat it, and then it becomes stormwater, and that's how they get by without it, but.
We just don't have that capability.
The, the simple fact of the matter is, we're on the hook for it, because it's going to save us more than that in the long run. The simple fact of the matter is.
We don't like it.
If it were, if it were in any other world, other than the government, heads would roll, people would lose their jobs, and they would find something else to do. The end. But we are, we are in the world of the big, the big wheel, which is government, and all we have to do is tax it on to somebody else.
If we got to do it, it needs to be at their cost, not with a profit.
Problem is, we don't have any say in it, because we're over the barrel.
I, I will say, I think, they're going to probably have to demobilize anyway, because you're talking about, what, four, six-week lead time? There's always, it's always a danger when you bring a second contractor on, you could bring somebody else in if you were able to find it.
We want them to do it while they're there, because that's their.
So, but I think.
Take them to get the tar.
Four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks?
Yeah.
Go back at them, hit them with the money. So you're off base. They can't send them a note.
And that's pretty much in three phone calls today, what we've done. Again, we, you know, we're not, we're not agreeing to the number. We think, you know, especially, we've got a unit price, we want to go back out and check those unit prices. We're going to go talk to some other vendors, see where they should be, and then go back and deal with it. But we're just, like David said, we're over a barrel, we're at a point where you're going to have to make a decision to protect the asset.
And it's Lobella, or it's the construction outfit, it's Lobella that.
They're the same, babe.
Lobella's the engineer who designed it and did, designed the bid specs and did not include.
The rain.
Rain cap as part of.
We paid them in the past, not just on this project.
Yeah, Lobella does our environmental permitting, everything at the landfill.
I would think we would have a better opportunity to, let's call it, share in this cost than if they were a one-off provider for us, never be seen.
Don't disagree, and I think at the end of the day, that may be very well part of the discussion. Again, we just got to figure out, what is, what should, what should the work cost?
So you just need approval to deal with this?
Well, and at this point, as much as I hate to say this, we had, we had hoped by now we would have an idea that the price would be reduced, but we don't. So while we say right now 15%, I would ask you to consider going ahead and bumping that to 17% so that we know that we can cover the cost without having to come back to the board. The county administrator can bring it to the properties committee for review prior to approval. But because of the four-to-six-week timeline that we know the construction project is, is kind of the completion and the lead time for the ordering, this may, this may require a fairly rapid response. And so I think we could get the properties committee together to evaluate the information, once we have all of it. And with their authorization, proceed with their recommendation, if that's acceptable to the board.
Sounds like it's our only option. So I move the board authorize the county administrator to approve change orders in an amount up to 17% of the original bid price with the concurrence of the properties committee.
You got a motion and a second, Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
No.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
I'm the no vote tonight.
Okay.
Page 349, the last slide before closed session, Madam Chair. Department of Housing and Community Development awarded Prince Edward County a grant amount of $175,000. This is funding for the counties in the region to include Amelia, Buckingham, Charlotte, Cumberland, Lunenburg, Notaway, and Prince Edward. The goal of the grant is to address broadband costs for citizens in the region. The planning process will be a nine-month-long process. The CRC will provide all the technical administrative assistance to the county in creation of the plan. There is no cost for the county directly. Part of this is, so we've got broadband that's going out to folks, is trying to make sure people are educated enough to use it, because not everybody is fluent in using the internet. It's also about trying to identify, there are programs and plans out there that you can get, you know, lower costs for folks who are lower income. But actually.
You're talking about me?
Chris, Kristen brought this, she was actually working on, I think, it's steps before she came to the CRC. And all our, we're going to be the fiscal agents, so the money will flow through the county and go out to the CRC on behalf of all the counties.
So moved.
It's been moved in second, not a second yet, please. Second. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes.
Dave, you have a closed session statement?
I do not.
When you run a closed session pursuant to.
It is, in fact.
393.
Last page. I move the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session for consultation with the county administrator, county attorney, and outside local counsel pertaining to probable litigation related to a contract for a construction project where such discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the litigation posture of the county pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Patty Cooper Jones, yes. We are now going into closed session.
Roll call. Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Dr. Pryor.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Emmert.
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones, yes.
Whereas Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to the firm's reported vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the board that such closed session was conducted and conforming with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved if the board hereby certifies at the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements in Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification applies and only set public matters as were identified in the motion to which the closed session was convened or heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Emmert?
I'm hung up.
Go right ahead.
Any member who believes there was departure from the requirements of this clause, that double, not mine is, mine is that no, nothing was, was discussed.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Watson?
No.
Dr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Gillum?
No.
Patty Cooper-Jones, no.
Terry, are we okay?
No, I think we should let's vote after. Is there a second to the motion?
We already did the second to the motion.
Would you vote after that?
Yeah, we just voted at the end.
That was the vote just now.
The vote should be yes because you're voting yes on the topic was stuck to. You're following far as those.
Okay.
There's two votes. There's. And the following part is if there is something that was stated and was not part of the topic, that is to be put into the motion.
We just voted no.
You should have voted yes because you held to the topic.
Okay. Recall on the vote. Mr. Emmert?
Hang on just a moment.
Okay.
Item two should be voted on, and then we move to item three, correct?
And then you got the second to the motion.
We already did. We did item two. And the last vote we took was item three.
Okay.
We already voted on item number two.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna solve this right here. As, as with my motion, I am gonna vote that there were no, there was nothing discussed outside of that. My vote would be yes, nothing is discussed.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one item to come out of closed session. It's consideration of a settlement release agreement with Hurt and Profit, but ask that the board entertain a motion to approve that settlement release agreement.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we let Doug execute just the way it needs to be.
Okay. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillum?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Emmert?
Yes.
Patty Cooper-Jones? Yes.
I believe that's all we have for this evening, Madam Chair.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?